To this evening's Town of Amerenick Planning Board meeting, I am Ralph Engel, Chair of the Planning Board. Lisa Hockman is Counsel to the Planning Board. Please confirm that this evening's meeting has been convened in accordance with Chapter 1 of the New York State laws of 2022, as well as Executive Order 11.8, which allow public bodies to meet and take action without permitting in-person public access to those meetings, and which authorize those meetings and any public hearings at those meetings to be held remotely by telephone or video conference call, provided that members of the public have the ability to view or listen, and that the meetings are recorded and later transcribed.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Francine Brill is Secretary to the Planning Board. Please confirm that this evening's meeting has been duly noticed, and please state for the record whether such notice has been posted and published.
Published.
Thank you. Please also confirm that all documents to be discussed this evening have been posted to the town website more than 24 hours ago. Actually, maybe Rob, oh, you'll have to do that since Francine wasn't here.
Yes, Ralph, all documents were posted to the town website for at least 24 hours.
Thank you. In addition, as to this evening's public hearings, please either Francine or Rob confirm that the required notices have been sent.
I have.
Thank you. The published notice of this meeting provided instructions for members of the public as to how to view this evening's meeting, and as how to participate in this evening's public hearings. The public has been provided with the ability to view this evening's Planning Board meeting, both on TV and online. This meeting is being broadcast live on LMCTV, which is Channel 35 on FiOS and Channel 76 on Optimum. It is also being streamed live on LMCTV.org. During this meeting, members of the public can send an email with questions or comments to the PlanningBoard@, let me spell it, P is in Peter, U is in Roy, L I C, Q C is in Charles,
Ralph, actually, on that note, Liz and I have to make one small clarification. The public QC email account appears to be inaccessible tonight, so we're actually going to ask that if anybody does want to email questions, to send it to my email, which is just RWASP@TownofAmerenickNY.org.
Thank you. In any event, a transcript of this meeting will be available at a later date. Francine Brill, for the record, please call the role to reflect which members and which alternate members of the Planning Board are present this evening.
Ralph Engel?
Here.
Elizabeth Cooney?
Here.
Edmund Papazian?
Here.
John Cuddy?
Here.
Sarah Dunn?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. The persons who are present on behalf of the town should now please identify themselves and the capacity in which they are present for our viewers.
Lisa Hockman, Counsel to the Planning Board.
Rob?
Rob Wasp, Town Engineer.
Carol?
Carol Murray, Assistant Civil Engineer.
Uh, Francine?
Phil Secretary?
Thank you, Anthony?
Anthony Oliveri.
I skipped Elizabeth, sorry.
Anthony Oliveri, Consulting Engineer to the Town.
Elizabeth?
Hi, Elizabeth Thatcherston, I'm an environmental planner for the Town of Amerenick.
Okay, Robin, if you're here, could you identify yourself? Guess not. Okay. Last item of introduction, Robert Wasp, as Town Engineer. Please confirm that the signs which had to be posted announcing this evening's public hearings have been posted.
Yes, Engineering Staff confirms the posting of signage for tonight's public hearings.
Okay. First item on the agenda tonight is a review and potential approval of the minutes of our last meeting, which was on July 13th. Hopefully, everybody has received a copy of the draft and has had a chance to review it. Do any of the members of the Planning Board, and today, everybody is because of the vacancies that we have, everybody is an active member, have any comments, criticisms, additions, subtractions, corrections, et cetera?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of typographical items. On the second page, the paragraph second that starts Mr. Mandel asked why certain trees. The last line of that, the should, there's a typo there.
Oh, the black cherry.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then down in item number three, the second paragraph starting with Mr. Saputo explained. The sentence, I think, should read, "Because it would not be possible to proceed with the plan and totally avoid the wetland buffer." I'd suggest putting a period right after buffer, and then start by saying, "The small existing lot is narrow, comma, non-conforming, and more than half the property is in the buffer area," period.
You know, it seems to me that the sentence as written, John, makes it clear as to explaining why what was done, was done. So I would suggest, in this case, if it's okay with you, that we leave this one as it is.
If you think so, that's fine. I mean, it just seemed to be to be something of a run-on sentence that
It's long.
Breaking it into two made more sense, but I'm fine with that. And then finally, the last line, "Miss Hockman was asked to prepare draft resolutions." Draft should be singular.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Anybody else? Can we have a motion to accept the minutes as modified?
So moved.
Second. Somebody?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hands. Please say aye for the record.
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain. I wasn't here last week.
Okay.
And I abstain also.
Okay. So hopefully Sarah can vote yes.
Yes.
I actually wasn't here at the last meeting either.
Oh, well, the minutes are short, so if you want to take it up again at the end of the meeting, after we've had an opportunity to hear 767 Forest, you are permitted to vote on the minutes even if you're absent. So maybe Ralph will move this to the end.
Okay, you mean the total end or after the two hearings?
Either one, after 767, either after the whole meeting or after that, whichever you prefer.
Okay, thank you, because, yeah, we had, there were only three people present at the last meeting, one of whom is not here tonight. Okay. With, Rob, please confirm that the first item on the agenda, 7 Madison, has been withdrawn or adjourned, or I'm not sure what it is.
Yes, that's correct. 7 Madison has been adjourned from this evening's agenda.
Thank you. Next is item two, which is a public hearing regarding 767 Forest Avenue. There are two hearings. The first is regarding the residential site plan. The second is regarding the wetlands and water courses permit. I would suggest at this point that we have a motion to open the first public hearing, and then we can proceed.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please raise hands and say aye.
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 Proposed, open. Okay, do we have a, oh, there we go. Can't hear you, Andrew.
Andrew can start.
Believe me, some people wish I had that permanently. Good evening, Chair members of the Planning Board, Andrew Stath, 650 Holstead Avenue, Street 105, Amerenick, New York, 10543, on behalf of the applicant. Chair, I just want to make sure that our architect guest Greg is on, and our clients are on the Monroe. I'm trying to scan the
Excuse me, Andrew, I'm going to bring them in.
Great, awesome. I want them to know that I'm actually, that Greg and I are actually working. There they are, okay.
There's Naz.
They're there. Wonderful, great. I'm actually going to throw this over to Greg with regards to any questions that there are members of the Planning Board may have, consultants may have with regards to the site plan. I do have a question, but I will allow Greg to go forward, and then I'll wrap back up with the question I have regarding the proposed resolution.
Andrew.
Since this is the first public hearing, please do summarize the application for any members of the public who have not been involved before.
Andrew, you want me to summarize?
Yeah, please.
Okay, great, sorry. Good evening, Gregory Lewis, Lewis Llos Architects, 753 Forest Avenue, Larchmont, New York. On the video is Dave and Naz Monroe, if you guys want to wave. They've got them muted here, but you see they're all happy and
Pleasure to be here.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Dave and Naz hired me to design a new house for them. Their existing house is very tired. They have a very unique site in that it slopes down from the front to back, but let me share a screen, and I will walk you through the site map, adjacent pictures, and then our proposal, and then we'll get into the civil engineering as well. Hold on a second. Can you see a location map? Great, thank you. So the project site is at 767 Forest Avenue, which is on the north side of Weaver here toward the end where it turns toward Rockland. The, some pictures of the house, oops, sorry. This is the existing front of the house. This is another shot of the front. And then we've got adjacent properties here to the left and to the right, and then some other neighbors across the street and around. Let me just show you this map because this will kind of help show you where the house is. We're actually at the end of Forest Avenue where it turns left and heads towards Rockland. Holly is here. This is the proposed site plan, but I'll show you that in a second. I've got new, this is a blow-up version of the same thing, showing the adjacent, oops, showing the adjacent properties. And I'd like to jump to the site plan because I think it's more explanatory. So the existing house is literally on the front yard setback. This is forest here. This is the existing house, 767. It's a one and a half story house. The neighboring properties, 769 and 765, are also located very close to the property. In evaluating the site and working with Dave and Naz, we decided that we didn't want to have a garage way in the back of the property or down the hill, because it would introduce a lot of impervious surface and asphalt down the driveway, and then the site slopes from front here to, you know, a good 10 feet lower in the back. So it's sloping, it's high here and into the back. So with the planning, with the zoning board's approval, we designed a one-story garage here, still setting it back from the property line, keeping a shorter driveway here and then entering to the property. The house itself is here. It's a two-story house over a full basement. So let me show you the site plan. As far as lot coverage, we're at 34.9%, and we meet all the setbacks for the main two-story house. Again, we obtained zoning approval for the one-story garage in the front here to be in the front yard setback, so that was the only variance. This is a demolition plan. Everything you see hatched here will be removed. This is the first floor plan. It's basically a front door here, stairs in the middle, and then bedroom, bedroom, living space here in a T that you see, and then the garage is up front, like I described before. There's a deck here with a circular stair to the first floor. Downstairs, we're proposing an open basement plan, two bedrooms, a pool, a little spa pool, and a bathroom sauna here. This is a mechanic room in the back. And then on the next floor, we've got four bedrooms, basically rating out from the center stair. There's a bridge that connects it. This is a two-story space. Bedroom, jack and jill bathroom, bedroom, bedroom with bathroom, and then a master suite here. We have a small balcony here, and this is the roof plan.
Are there a total of six bedrooms? Is that correct?
Four, five, six.
Not correct. What you described, the bedroom on the main floor is an art studio, and the ones downstairs are home offices.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then Naz and Dave had an interest in a more modern structure, so we've developed this design here. Again, looking from the front for the street, the main entry door here. This is this two-story stair tower, and then the one-story garage on the right. This is the left side of the property. The garage is to the right. The two-story, excuse me, the stair tower here, and then the rooms on the left side of the house, and then this back porch here, stairs down. And then the rear elevation is here, the back porch. The basement's exposed on the back, slider is here, and then this is the two-story space here, and then the bedroom, bedroom upstairs here. This is the right side of the house, again, the garage door, side garage door here, and then kitchen and dining room here, bedrooms and bathroom upstairs. So with that, I'll stop sharing. Steve would like to talk, Steve Saputo from our Langen Engineering, to talk more about the site layout and the site drainage.
Greg, before we jump to the engineering component, do you have the photo or the virtual photo of the color, what aesthetically would look like? I believe that was designed by
Sure.
Naz?
Hold it up.
It was really, I think it was very compelling to see how tasteful.
Preliminary rendering, but it gives the sense of what we have here. So this is the proposed house. One-story garage here, driveway pulling in.
Indicative of the foliage landscaping and, yeah.
Stair tower, yeah, the entry door, and then the bedroom, bedroom up here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Steve, do you want to take over?
Sure thing. Can you see the layout and utility plan?
Yep.
Okay, so existing, there are some walls on in the front right corner of the property. Those are going to remain. There's an existing wall that's actively falling over. That's going to come down and get pushed further back into the lot, and the existing walls that are remaining are going to get extended to that. Greg did a good summary of the layout, so I'd like to move forward to the grading and drainage. Some grading is proposed on the site. It's more for quality of life. We are proposing seven cul-de-sac chambers in the backyard in regards to stormwater. We are detaining and treating the entire design storm, and we also considered the 100-year storm. We detain a majority of that, but any overflow would bubble up out of DMH1 in the backyard, which inevitably goes to the back right corner of the lot, but it doesn't offer any impact to any neighbors or any surrounding areas. The finished floor of the first floor is at 85.8, and the basement floor is at 74.8. We're picking up the entire house's roof leaders on each side, and we have one extra structure in the front of the house to capture the entire front yard and anything that doesn't land behind this high point. We intentionally graded this out to avoid discharging any extra water onto Forest and keeping all of the majority of the property in our system. Moving.
One of the three squares that on this picture are just to the right of the house.
These right here? Yeah, so those are our generator pad and AC pads provided by Greg Lewis, that he can speak more on the mechanical aspect of that, but that's where they've been for the duration of this project.
Yeah.
Okay. In regards to soil erosion and sediment control, we had Yost Design help us out with tree protection and landscaping, so this is reflecting their plan. We have the standard soil erosion sediment control measures. We have silt fence, tree protection fence. We have a soil stockpile in the back inlet protection and a construction entrance in the front, where necessary, to avoid any sediment finding its way onto Forest Avenue. Does anybody have questions on my end?
Is there any rock removal?
We don't foresee rock removal. There is one area that might be present with this DI1, this drain inlet in the front. There is some ledge present right here. You can see it a little bit. We tried to avoid that. I can't make any promises, but we can't see underground. But as far as I know, we don't anticipate much, if any, rock removal.
Steve, your new structure is over the retaining wall. It's getting removed, so there shouldn't be a conflict there.
Correct, yeah, that's also why we tried to place that there, because we're going to be filling in this area just a little bit.
And at this point right now, there is no existing store management in place. We're actually adding something that currently does not exist.
Correct. Our numbers post-development versus pre-development are seriously helping this area, especially when we consider the entire property being law, lawn as necessary for redevelopment.
Does the property have a history of having runoff?
So in the back quarter back here, there's a flood plain from Westchester County GIS. Dave and Naz can definitely speak more on their personal experiences with runoff and flooding and any form of stormwater issues. As far as I know, it's, I could imagine it's a typical house with a low backyard that gets a little pond in it.
No, we've never, in the most serious storms, we've never had any buildup there at all.
So that's also getting avoided with this.
And no flooding. Our basement's been fine. Fortunately, because of the hill, I think we've been in good shape.
And any problem, once again, just to reemphasize, any problem that you currently have, which it seems like you don't, you'll be adding improvement to the lot with what you're proposing to do at this particular point?
Yes.
Correct.
Is there a house directly below the back of your property?
No, you're saying back here?
Yeah.
No, so I have a, I also have a location map. There's an easement, and then the rear neighbor is off to the corner.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Yep. My pleasure.
Anybody else on the board have any questions?
Not about Langen, but I do have questions.
Okay.
But I think they're going to address it. You said, Ralph, I think you had, you were speaking to the generator and the air conditioner. I think they're going to give a synopsis on that, so that's what I'm waiting for.
Fine.
I can hand that back over to Greg Lewis, who can tell you more about that. Greg, you want to share your cut sheets?
Yep.
Okay.
Greg Lewis, we've chosen a air conditioner, condenser that's actually very quiet. It has variable speeds in the fan, so it doesn't click onto the high level immediately, and it has a sound insulator in itself. And the generator itself has a sound insulator in the cover as part of the standard package with the generator.
So what does that mean as far as sound is concerned? Who's going to hear it?
The 55 to 72 for the condenser. The generator is, I'd have to look again. Well, we've got both, all three of the units screened with landscaping.
I think we did get to the landscaping plan, yeah.
What's that?
I think the landscaping plan shows what you're talking about.
Yeah, exactly. Steve, do you want to pull up the landscaping plan? But the generator is just exercised once a week for 10 minutes. When the generator is running during a storm, if there's this power outage, it would be similar to other generators that people have running at that time, and it's just kind of a known noise that we have during a storm, a power outage.
Well, I guess my question is, what does that really mean as far as sound is concerned? I mean, we have a generator next door to us that sounds like a choo-choo train over here when it starts up. Is this state-of-the-art? What's the sound?
Yeah, let me. No problem. Hey, Paige, could you look up, yeah, it's the Generac 22 K V Killam. We're trying to pull it up right now. But
That's a whole house generator, I take it?
I'd see if, I've got it here. Just got to zoom in one second.
Sure.
Greg, yeah, you definitely had the numbers. I believe two meetings ago, we went over the numbers of the decibels.
Yep.
To actually ask, yeah.
Give me a second here.
No problem. And previously, I don't think it was problematic.
Steve, if you want to do the landscaping, and then I can come back to this. Let me just, I'll just stop sharing here.
I could share the landscaping plan. I'd rather not try to talk about it because that is not my strong suit.
No, you could just go over.
I think the part we're going to be talking about is the white shields, these three.
Yeah, so this is the landscaping plan prepared by Yost Design. We have, this is where those pads are right here, the two AC and the generator. There, we have proposed screening right up against it. That's for visual, and also that can provide some audible screening. And then a row of some more foliage just across on the property line.
Needs specifics, I think Erin Rice from Yost Design should be on the Zoom meeting.
Yeah, I believe so. She might be in the gallery.
I'm sure they're planning, they want to know whether or not that's seasonal or that would be
And those are the answers. That would be best answered by Erin.
I can go on my iPhone and check it out, you know, I've become an expert here. Let you know.
I do see Erin Rice is in the attendees room, so I just moved her into the panelists.
Okay, great, Russell. Robert.
How far are those pads from the adjacent building?
A property, the home to the left?
Yes, yes.
Property line, let's see if you can pull that up.
You might remember that there was a change in the order of the three items, so that the generator, which is the noisiest, was moved the furthest away from the neighborhood property.
I believe that says 15.
I show 18 and 1 inch.
On the property line, okay, got it.
From the, from the adjacent house is 18 feet. At least, because the generator is down here.
Yeah.
It was behind you. Hi, this is Erin Rice here, too, now to you.
There you are.
So Erin, it's Andrew Stath's counsel for the Alpican. I think one of the questions that the Planning Board had specifically to type of the genre of the landscaping around the generator and air conditioning condenser, would that be seasonal or would that be through the winter as well?
Yeah, these are evergreen shrub here, the skip laurel. So it'll be about six feet high, and evergreen year-round.
You're talking about the ones near the generator and the air conditioning unit, so the ones at the boundary of the property?
Yep, those, yep, the one that someone's waving the hand over.
Okay. Thank you.
So it's Greg Lewis. I can come back on with the
So it's Greg Lewis. I can come back on with the decibels. It's fifty-seven at the test and sixty-seven when it's running, which is lower than a vacuum, which is seventy. A lawnmower is eighty-three, so we're below those other common things that you hear.
On the generator.
On the generator.
And the air conditioner.
Uh, let me look it up. Go ahead and back to landscaping.
Greg, and then just for the board's clarity, what's the distance that those ratings are measured at?
That's a tough question here.
Isn't it usually twenty-five feet?
Let me find it.
What I've read is they usually measure it about twenty feet.
Twenty feet is what, yeah, we just, we just found it as well, twenty feet.
Perfect.
Yeah, and on the, on the one we're using for the air condensers, fifty-seven to seventy-five are the two ranges, so they're quite low. Again, a vacuum is seventy, a lawnmower is eighty-three, so we're three less than a lawnmower.
And if you drive with my kids, it's about a hundred and fifty, so that's not bad.
Thank you.
Are you saying that the air conditioning condensers are louder than the generator?
The fifty-seven to seventy, I got fifty-seven to seventy-five. The condenser is louder than the generator. The generator has a sound insulator on it in the cover.
Okay, but they, I mean, this, first of all, both of them will probably be running at the same time. Right?
No, when you don't have power, it depends how it's wired up. It might have one wired up to the.
Much of a load on the generator, so if power is out, we wouldn't be, typically you wouldn't run air conditioning when power is out. You'd want to run your critical loads like lights and refrigerator and freezer.
Right.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about when the power is on. And I assume one of these is for the first floor and one of these for the second or something of that sort.
Correct.
Okay, so in a normal day like today, or not normal day like today, they both be running, right?
Both, I'm sorry, I got confused. I thought you meant both the generator and the.
No, no, no.
Sorry, it was. Correct, yeah, both will be running.
Okay, it just seems to me odd, and I'd like some input from our two engineers. Please, as to sound, that you'd have an air conditioning generator, pardon me, an air conditioning condenser, having, most of us have them, which is nearly as loud or even louder than a generator. The modern condensers are generally far quieter.
Rob, I think in this case, I think that the generator's published rating is somewhat artificially low just because it has that built-in sound attenuator. The numbers that Greg references does seem consistent with what we've seen for other condensers and other applications. And I would also just point out that obviously that's just the rating without any sort of dampening from landscaping, which clearly their site plan has been planned to include, so. I would say that in my opinion, it does appear to be consistent with best practice.
Thank you. Anybody else on the planning board have any questions or comments? Okay, is the presentation, I think, is now complete. We can open this to any member of the public who would like to participate.
Okay, at this point, I'll just open it up that if anybody's in our attendees group, if you wish to speak, we can permit you to talk. Please use the raise your hand function. And you will be given permission to speak one at a time. Alternatively, if you're watching this, if you wish to send an email, please send it to rwasp@tanamamernickny.org. That's R W A S P at tanamamernickny.org. Just checking my email, and as of right now, we have no new emails and no hands are raised in the attendees group.
Okay. And can we have a motion to close this public hearing, please?
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
In favor, raise hand and say aye, please.
Aye.
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 Okay, public hearing is closed. We have a draft of a potential resolution approving what's been done with a couple of blanks in it. Members, I know things were distributed a bit late this time. Now the members of the planning board had a chance to reveal.
Yes, yes.
Okay, does anybody have any changes that are desired in it?
Mr. Chairman, the, on the second page, this is with respect to the residential site plan approval. The last whereas clause regarding the tree that abuts to properties. Just to typo, there should be a period at the end of neighboring property and a semicolon up above in the previous whereas and the word and.
Absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Chair, if I could just interject it, same question I had with regards to Mr. Cuddy on whereas. I just want to confirm that it's still tree number sixteen, because we make, you make reference that in paragraph number seventeen on page four discussing about the removal of that tree. So I just want to make sure we're talking all globally on the same tree. It's number sixteen. Two and paragraph number seventeen on page four.
That's something you're in with now?
I could also bring the, the landscape plan back up if we'd like.
Okay, one, I think it, it makes sense to make sure we're all talking about the same tree. Yes, it's true.
Yeah, I guess I'm not sure what, which the paragraphs is, but sixteen is.
I'm sorry, Lisa, it's the whereas that Mr. Cuddy was just making reference to on page two.
The last one.
And then paragraph number seventeen on page four, there's reference to the removal of any tree, which is only partly on the property. I imagine obviously that paragraph number seventeen is making reference to tree number sixteen on page two.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, and that appears to be the only tree, number sixteen, with a potential issue like that.
And Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, we talked a bit about the the demolition and construction process in terms of trucks and given the fact that this property is on a fairly narrow street, which bends around right, right where it's located. Is there anything that we need to say or, you know, condition in these minutes or this approval with respect to trucks and construction vehicles that, that may impact the neighborhood?
Well, as you know, John, we have in other cases required everything to be parked on the site and not on the street. Is that what you're getting at?
Well, we did talk about, I asked the question last time, given the, 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 the sharp drop off of the property in the back, whether there was going to be any problem in terms of the construction. And I, I think I was told that the trucks would largely be confined on site. Was that, am I remembering that correctly?
I think so.
But you know, didn't we approve a house just across the street about a year, year and a half ago? And it was at the same juncture where the road turns, and that doesn't appear to have been a problem for the people on the street during construction. We added anything to the permit.
Okay, I mean, if, if, if folks don't think that anything is necessary, that, that's fine.
Anybody else have a comment on this issue? Okay. And we'll go back to the resolution itself. Any other proposed additions, revisions, subtractions or whatever?
Um, can I just ask the two engineers if, to confirm whether the plans listed are the most up-to-date plans?
Is this to respond to that? So I do note that the erosion and sediment control plan that Langen submitted for this month's meeting has a last revised date that's more current to what's in the resolution. It is still dated accurately for April twenty-twenty-two, but the last revised is actually July. I guess if we could just make that, unless we want to leave it, because the dated line is still accurate, it's just that the last revised line is updated.
I do want to put the last revised date. Do you have the July what for that?
July nineteenth, it looks like.
Thanks, Anthony.
Okay, that's the, is that the stormwater management?
Erosion and sediment control.
Is that in site plan? I'm sorry, I'm not seeing it. Yeah.
It's in one of the sets. If you look at the bullet, this is as plans titled Monroe Residence Prepared by Langen. Yeah.
Okay.
Probably I'll leave it as dated four eighteen, then I'll just do comma last revised, and we can use the July date as last revised.
Is that the only one that changed?
The landscape plan was also resubmitted, but I did not see an updated date stamp on it.
I think Erin is still on. She could probably comment on the last and middle.
I have the submission up on the screen, and the landscape plan just is dated June twentieth, twenty-twenty-two. There's no revision dates.
That's what I have too.
Right.
I have a planting plan and a tree location and protection plan.
And the plant, you know, the planting plan is June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. There's two separate dates, yes.
Correct.
Okay, so it's correct as it, as it's listed?
I'm not on it.
Oh, the, the planting plan is.
I, I
Yeah.
As far as I know, I submit to Langen, so I, as far as I know, we haven't been submitted before as the landscaping arborist plan.
Yeah, Lisa, just go back to your question. Yeah, so the date that's listed in the resolution is the correct date, six twenty-seven.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions, comments?
I guess just to ask Francine to confirm whether all required referrals have been made.
Oh, yes, please. Thank you. Okay, then can we have a motion to adopt the draft resolution as circulated?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
All in favor, please raise hands and say yes. Yes.
Yes, aye.
I'm going to abstain.
Well, okay, majority has approved it, so we can move on to the next. Same property, item three on the agenda, only now application for wetlands and watercourses permit. Also, public hearing, motion to open that public hearing, please.
So moved.
All in favor, aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Done. Okay, is there a further presentation you want to make or did the prior one really cover it all?
That really covers it all. If anything, I just, I can show real quick the, the map showing the extents of the Sheldon Drake watercourse buffer, just so everybody's on the same page.
Thank you.
So that can be seen here. The one hundred foot Sheldon Drake River Water Course Buffer cuts through the majority of the property. That's mostly why we're looking for this welllands watercourses permit. There is a one hundred year flood plain line taken from Westchester County GIS in the bottom right corner of the property, but as you can see on the site plan, we're not touching anything within that area. We're not doing any work in there. That's, that's remaining as is.
Thank you. Anybody on the board have any questions regarding this?
I'm sorry, aren't there six trees being removed in the buffer area?
That's what, that's what I, I saw it just in the buffer area, six.
Oh, in the buffer, I'm sorry.
Right, but on the entire property, there's more.
Yes. There's, so these trees up here, these are a lot of clumps of trees up here. There's a couple of clumps, so the numbers given by Erin from Yost, those are the numbers that are most accurate. In, in, in terms of what trees are being removed and what types they are and any interesting information about them.
Okay. Last one, coastal zone have any issue with any of that?
No, they didn't.
Okay. And once again, any further questions from anybody on the board?
Well, we're, we're, we're needing to make a finding of fact that erosion control practices will be used during construction to prevent any impact to the river and on the surrounding properties. That seems to me to be the critical question that is raised by this application. So, I mean, just what can the engineers tell us about the, the erosion control practices and how effective they're likely to be?
I guess I'll leave that for Steve to first present. Steve, do you want to just answer the question as to how the erosion control plan was offered the site?
Sure, we're, we're, everything down slope has silt fence per standard practices. Anytime that any, this, this soil stockpile that's located in the rear of the property, if necessary, that's also got silt fence around it. And in our details, it's explained and standard practices that after it's not used for a certain period of time is to be stabilized. So we have no concern of unnecessary soil erosion or sediment deposit beyond this X line here.
And we also, I would also add on to Mr. Saputo's statement that the town through the stormwater permit, what we issued prior to the start of construction, also adds some permit conditions such as anytime that any earthwork or ground disturbing work is paused on the site for more than a two-week period, that the Alpican is responsible to put in temporary stabilization. Typically, straw with temporary seed or, or a mulch cover to help reduce the amount of turbidity and stormwater runoff.
What happens to that mound of soil when the construction is finished?
If necessary, it would be used for any form of fill anywhere. This is, this is more so to just delineate an area that we're comfortable to contractor or the builder putting any material, any, any soil material somewhere localized. And then it getting dispersed. I don't foresee any reason that soil would have to be shipped off-site or brought in. We're not doing much, much fill or cut on this property.
Don't anticipate changing the level of the property to any considerable extent.
Any drastic degree, no. Like I said earlier, there was, there's some grading proposed more so for quality of life and to ensure proper drainage.
John, do you have more?
No, I, I thank you, Rob, for giving us your, your assessment. I think I think that answers the question for me.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else on the board, any questions or comments before we open this up to the public? Rob, and Liz, anybody want to speak or send an email?
Sure. Once again, if anybody in the attendees group wants to speak on this application, please use the raise your hand function, and you will be permitted to speak one at a time. Alternatively, you can send emails to my email account, rwasp, that's R W A S P at tanamamernickny.org. Okay, I don't see any hands raised in our group, and I, nor do I see any emails sent.
Okay, in that case, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
All in favor, raise hand and say yes, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, public hearing is closed. Okay, next item is a review of the resolution that was drafted by our council, our request. Beyond, you know, other than I guess one part for already been discussed. Does anybody else have any other proposed changes to it?
Mr. Chairman, there seems to be a, an item that dropped off on page five, item 14. Probably having to do with federal and state permits.
Well, you're right. There's a, there's a missing language apparently. Lisa, you have any idea what that says?
I, I can pull that up. I see what you're saying. So just give me a minute and I'll pull up the last version and see if it's there.
Eagle eye.
Is this where we're supposed to get up and get something out of the freezer like ice cream or something? That's the problem with these Zoom. I mean, I'm staring at the sword here. Not good.
Okay.
Well, Andrew, I was saying all my years ago on the Zoom meetings or going to any public planning board meeting, I don't think I've ever been given ice cream. So that would be a first for me.
Okay, so in the last version, it says prior to the issuance of any town permits, the applicant shall obtain any and all applicable federal and state permits and authorizations.
So we would have adopted with that language in it?
Yep. Thank you.
Lisa, you got that right?
Yep.
Okay. Can I have a motion to adopt the resolution as now modified?
It was just with respect to that one. Did I miss?
Yeah, sorry. You want to, you want to ask Francine again?
Um, well, actually, I don't have that recital in the wetlands permit, but I'll go ahead and add that. Francine, are there any referrals that, that you typically make for wetlands?
No, I think you said.
Okay.
But, but Lisa, will you be amending the, the engineering?
Oh, thank you.
Just gonna say that, yeah. We're gonna make the one date change for the plans by Langen.
Yep, so we're last revised, that's the first one, last revised July 19th, correct?
Was it the 19th through the 18th, Steve?
The soil erosion plan was the 19th, 7/19/22.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Anything further? Okay, with these revisions, a motion to accept.
Hey, can I jump in real quick? Do, do we want to put in the, the, the tree removal plan in this one too that was in the other one?
If you, if you think that's a good idea, we can add that in.
Yeah, I think we probably should to make it consistent with the, with the first one.
So the plans, so basically to have the list of plans in both resolutions match each other.
Yes.
Yeah.
Agree.
Anything else?
Lisa, are you, so you're just suggesting the whereas about the, again, the tree number 16, is that Ms. Aquin you're referring to?
No, I wasn't going to put that in here. I was just going to add to the list of plans.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, the two resolutions are not exactly alike. They sort of track each other, but not exactly because there are different set, you know, look. Okay, motion to accept the modified resolution, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye and raise hand, please.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, done. Question, are you the Munro's in any manner related to the Munro's after whom the street Lomaraneck is named?
Not that we know of.
Yeah, it's entirely possible if you go far back enough, but.
Probably the same plan.
It is interesting. I'm glad you noticed that we, I have a relatively common name, but they spell M L N.
Yeah.
They don't seem to have an E on the end. It's spelled N E N R O, straight, R as in E, they, you know.
Same plan.
Okay, thank you. Have a good time with you in the house.
Thank you, everyone. We really appreciate your time.
We do.
Thank you, Chair, members of planning board and all the colleagues. Have a great rest of the summer. We'll work on getting the delivery of the ice cream for everybody.
Sounds good. Now it's done. It's not bribery.
Was that John Cuddy making the motion, Elizabeth Cooney seconding?
Yes.
And were there any abstentions on that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.
You're volunteering. Thank you.
Okay, let's take a brief pause and deal with the minutes. Since they're very short anyway. Okay, anybody have any further changes other than the one that was made with the typo? In that case, can we have a motion to adopt the minutes with the typographical error fixed? However, you had a chance to review them since.
I, I did review them, but I wasn't at the meeting. So.
I know.
So you're permitted to, to vote on minutes even if you were absent, if you have read the minutes and familiarized and you feel comfortable that you're familiar with the issues. And since we just heard a summary of 767 Forest, I think that that would be enough to familiarize yourself with the minutes.
Yeah, I mean, that's basically the only thing that's in the minutes.
Okay, I mean.
I have the same issue. Can one of us move to adopt them though, or somebody was here actually needs to move to adopt?
No, any, anyone can move it.
Okay. Well, why don't we, since I was there, I will make a motion to adopt the minutes with the typographical error corrected. John?
Second.
Okay, now all in favor, please raise hands.
Aye.
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 Opposed. Abstentions, done. Next item.
Okay, sorry, I didn't hear. Were there any abstentions? Okay.
Next item, which is at number four on the agenda, is, so what is it, 18 prior manner, late.
So just before we start, I just want to remind everyone with subdivision, there's some timeframe requirements that we have to comply with in terms of how our code distinguishes between preliminary and final layout and concluding the seeker before we consider the final layout. So the way I anticipate this going is tonight for consideration and then up to the board to determine whether or not to have a public hearing on the preliminary layout next month. If we do, we would need to just conclude the seeker process before opening the public hearing. And, and then there would be certifications from the Department of Health and Westchester Joint Water Works that would need to be received before the board considers the final, the final plat. And typically that has its own separate public hearing. So it, it's very cumbersome to have two separate public hearings, but unfortunately our code doesn't distinguish between major and minor subdivision. So if the applicant or any board members have any questions, we can, we can get into that more later.
Can I ask you a question? Is, is, would it be possible if the town board decided for the town board to make our local law conform more to the state law so that we wouldn't have to go through a double procedure every time?
Yes, with, with a code, with a change of the town code, which would have to be done by the town board, yes.
Thank you. Just going forward, at least. Okay. Time for presentation, please. By the way, just to make it clear, everything else on the agenda this evening is for consideration and no further public hearings. Sir.
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Yes.
Yeah, tonight we're, I'm just thinking of Kevin Darty, the owner. I don't see him here yet. All right, we'll start anyway. Kevin, the Dartys have owned this property 100 years at least. Funny little pocket down there at the bottom of Dillon Road and then into Prior Manor. Basically, with this application here, he would just like to take his property, his brother lives in one more house. Is to subdivide it in anticipation of some future business with the family. It's just dropping one line across the property he has. And basically there's no house proposed at the time, but I can show you that we've, we've actually have the parameters to show that a house will fit. One of the delaying factors over our time as the engineers finding the proper sewer connection. This unique property has the Westchester County main sewer line running right through it from down to Marchmont and toward New Rochelle. They have all the easements, ages old easements to build over it so long as there's no bearing weight on it or, or interference with the operation of the sewer, obviously. But the basic agreement says, yes, you have permission to build over it, just don't touch it. So at any rate, there's a manhole on the property rather proximate to a new lot. And then the second choice would be the, let me see if I can figure this here, would be the I'll pull, I'll pull the main one up. Here's the existing conditions. Can you see that?
No.
No, we just have a list.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, sorry. I'm using two screens and I'm usually very clumsy with this, so.
It's okay. We all have to live with the Zoom stuff.
I don't know, your screen sharing, I don't know if you can see that yet.
No.
If it helps, I can, I can manually stop your screen share if you want to try to restart it with the other screen selected.
Yeah. Okay, it says, says I'm obviously sharing the screen, but I'm not sharing.
Yeah, let's try to relaunch it. I'm going to stop your sharing if you just want to try relaunching it.
Okay.
I can try again.
Are you, are you trying it?
We're just back to seeing the, the same listing of your files. There we go.
There you go. Okay. All right, this is, this is the, the one we would like to present just so you can see everything at once. There's a Bernardo survey that we need for the property. Couple of reviews with peer group. Basically, this is the, the main gist of what we want to do. It's from this, can you see my cursor moving? This is the line we'd like to place on the property, those bearings. We're, we're both, both are fully compliant sized lots. The line you see around here is actually a rendition of one of the setbacks schemes. Obviously not going to change on the existing house. But this, this depending on which side is chosen as the front, when an eventual house does come up for you, it would be here and that will be shown at that time. This, this line through here, right through the middle, is the Westchester County sewer, 12 foot easement. As you can see, it goes right under the other house. We have all the electrical and plumbing, all the utilities present at the site in the Big Traverse Inn from Dillon Road. Basically, what we thought was going to be a problem, but I think we solved it with the owner. These two black circles here indicate existing manholes which go to the sewer. Mr. Darty's present house, this one here drains, is connected to this manhole. There was some kind of previous action where the houses uphill to the bottom of the screen on the drawing were permitted to connect back down here also. And then this one out in Dillon Road, which is actively sought after by other subdivisions out of the town of Lomaraneck very often. But I think we solved this pretty neatly. It's just a private easement back over here that he's, he agrees with and it can be done. So that any house over here can just hop over to the easement and run it back around to the sewer. The, one of the things, as you can see in the parameters below, we've shown that this house remains containing the structure remains zoning compliant. One of the main things with this piece of property in general, and basically the area back toward Premium Marsh is the base flood elevation. The spot elevations generally are at nine here. And we need to be at 12 in terms of the FEMA flood zone, BFE, base flood elevation. So that's easily overcomeable by, when you take that number, bring that, you find the 12 four feet above the, the relatively flat site here, and then you add two feet and then for the freeboard. So essentially a house first floor would be about five feet above this. And they'd build to that, which isn't infrequent around that area. A lot of the houses have their garages underneath. Here, or you would be allowed to bring the garage in at a lower level than the BFE. As long as you comply with certain flood, floodways and things like that, but it's not regulated to be above the base flood elevation. So basically what we'd like to show is just that right now we'd like to drop the line where you see it here. And basically there's no construction going on. There's nothing anybody can see. So it'll operate as it is currently. Mr. Darty enters his property over here where this is shaded. That's just to indicate what would potentially be removed when something's built over here. So that the planning board knows about that. Mr. Darty's brother lives over here off the, off the drawn map here. As this is derived from the survey. So th- this is the way in. There is Premium River Road over here. Just, there was just some, some rudimentary improvements down there to clean it up. And the entry will still remain off Dillon Road over here. And essentially, he would like to split his property.
Can I ask a couple of questions, please? Two or three years ago, there was another application for pretty much the same thing that came to the planning board. And I don't recall and I don't know what happened to the records of it. I couldn't find it among mine, but mine are not complete. As to why that was withdrawn.
You got to this property?
Yeah, and this property. This is not the first time.
Yeah, I'm not aware of.
Okay. And I, I will ask Francine or Rob, or just, you know, not now, to find out what happened last time because it may influence what happens this time. Other questions I have, so far as I can tell, there's a gym that straddles the property line. Is that correct according to this diagram? Other questions I have, so far as I can tell, there's a gym that straddles the property line, is that correct according to this diagram?
Uh, I'm sorry, um, Mr. Angle, what was the, is it, what, what's?
You can go up where it says lot two. There is something called, something gym.
Oh, a jungle gym, that's just.
Jungle gym.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Well, so I couldn't really read it.
Yes, right.
Is that, is that actually there?
Uh, I wish Kevin, those things come and go. I don't recall it being there, but he's got a couple of kids that are older than jungle gym right here. Uh, uh, this might have been drawn just from the survey. As we've used it, uh, a year ago. Uh, it's, it's not even mounted to the ground, it's just on the ground if you're removed. Which it would be, yeah.
There was a survey or something that looks sort of like a survey filed, which does not show it. But the survey that I have a copy of, and I'm, I guess, as the others do too, is not signed, is not sealed. Uh, I don't know what, what it actually is. It looks like a survey. But in any event, we need an actual signed sealed survey.
Uh, is that, uh?
That's it.
This is the one you have?
Yeah, and it has a date.
Yeah, this is.
Signature, has no seal, nothing. Yeah.
Well, uh, Bernardo's is right around, I can have him steal it. I know there is sealed copy, sometimes you use the, uh, the, um, the press, it might not be visible here, but, uh, I can certainly submit one easily enough.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure because otherwise our record wouldn't be complete.
So, Mr. Fleming, uh, looking at the, uh, short form environmental survey that you, uh, or questionnaire that you, uh, you submitted, there are a couple of questions on there that, uh, you, you can help me with. Um, item six asked the question, is the proposed action consistent with the predominant character of the existing built or natural landscape? And the answer was no. Is that, is that correct?
Oh, my God, um, no, that is not correct, I'm sorry, uh, I think. I'm sorry, this is just a, uh, a, a, a comment. They switch yes and no sometimes.
Yeah, they keep going back and forth.
They did, yes, yes.
Yes, this is completely consistent with the character.
So that may, that may answer my other questions, uh, but, but there is no answer to the next question, item seven. Is it located in or does it join a state listed critical environmental area?
Uh, you know, I'm sorry that this went in like this. It is in the adjacent critical envi- environmental area to the Premium Marsh. So actually, I didn't know what the correct answer would be to that. Now, I was gonna refer to this.
Yes, it's a, it is, it's continued, it's, it's adjacent to the critical environmental area. I have to double check where the actual boundary of that is. Um, that, as far as I know, the road is part of the critical environmental area.
Okay.
So it would be yes or no?
So there would be a yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. I, I will fix that and, uh.
And then item sixteen, is this project site located in the one hundred year flood plain? And the answer is no. Is that correct?
Uh, no, that is not correct. I just rechecked that this evening as I was waiting here, and it is in the, um, hundred year flood zone and is a wetland in New York State.
Right.
So actually, I think that, um, you're going to need to do a long form EAF, isn't that correct, Liz?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that they would have to do a long form, but, you know, I also see on this version, you know, the newer versions of the short form, that they allow for a part two to be completed by the lead agency and a part three, which is a determination of significance on the short form. So I, I'll have to look that up and, and see if they need to do a long form.
For, cause specifically I would think they do because, um, this, which would otherwise be an unlisted action, um, will now be, um, pulled up into type one because of its adjacency to the critical environmental area, and I thought you always have to do a long form for a type one.
I would think so, but that was, you know, I remember the, uh, the old forms didn't have all of these sections on it. The old short form.
Okay, well, I defer you on that.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think, I think it probably does have to do a long form and it would need, regardless, it would need to be signed, like, I know this form is not signed either. By the applicant, so it would be under part one, go to part one. Uh, what page is it? Uh, page?
Three.
Page three. Should have a signature there.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Okay.
Um, I'm, uh, again, uh, I'm sorry for the infrequency of, uh, filling these in, um. I don't usually fill them in by, uh, fillable forms, sorry about that, but I would, I would have, uh, signed it. I'll correct it and sign it.
Okay, and I, I'll, I'll look tomorrow to see if, if they have to do a different form.
Well, is there any reason why this cannot be sent to Coastal Zone in the meantime?
Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Sure.
Uh, interject, um. And, uh, by the way, I apologize, I did get to a review on this and the other considerations tonight, but, uh, there's a bit of a snafu, we didn't get the plans, uh,
Right.
Uh, kind of in time, so, um, I do have a memo I managed to, uh, generate today, did not go out yet, but I'll get it out. Um, we did meet with, uh, Mr. Fleming, uh, on this several months ago. And we went over some of the things, some of the items that were needed, and maybe I could just run it down real quick. Um, just real quick, looking at the plans, uh, that was submitted, uh, as you, as you pointed out, nothing is signed and sealed that has to happen. With any submitted plans. Uh, there seem to be two site plans submitted, one was called site plan for lot one. The other was just site plan. Uh, lot one had a zoning table for the lot one house, there was no zoning table for lot two. Um, I'm not sure if one of those is intended to be the preliminary plat, but we need a plat, uh, in, in correct format. Um, there, there's, there was no detail submitted, and we, we did go over this, uh, on Mr. Fleming, I, I believe in the, uh, peer meeting. Um, to kind of demonstrate feasibility of, of the subdivision, you know, just kind of basic engineering things. Um, the, the sewer and water services for both houses need to be shown, the.
Those are shown.
I, 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 I saw it for one house, and tonight you pointed out that there was a manhole behind lot one where it's connected, and there's another drawing showing a sewer line out to Dillon, so I'm not sure what's happening there. Um, stormwater needs to be looked at, at least in a preliminary form. Um, there, there are spot grades on the plant, but there's no grading on the, uh, proposed grading or, uh, driveway, uh, grading shown. Uh, if you look at the two lots that are proposed, it shows driveways going out to Premium Road, Premium River Road. There was some question when we met if the road, you know, to what extent the road might have to be improved or not. So that needs to be, uh, kind of determined and, and, and looked at. Um, and I know, I noted the, the flood plain as, as, as we noted, um, and the, uh, provision, you know, for the county trunk line, you know, I have to just make note or show some provision that the house foundation will not there on the trunk line. But, um, there's really not enough there as it is to, uh, kind of make any kind of engineering determination of, uh, you know, on feasibility.
Well, um, I, I appreciate that, and I've tried to respond to that, and I remember all of them very well. And we've even gone to the extent of placing a house on here, uh, Mr. Oliver, I appreciate that. Uh, I'm demonstrating on all the site plans submitted, including the one I have up now. That, uh, everything is available, but, uh, we're not building a second house. Uh, so some of the questions you're asking for, uh, it could be the one I'm showing or someone else's design. So, uh, we're just trying to cut the property off in, in this application. But, uh, I believe I have answered the, I'm looking, uh, Saturday sewer nap, map, uh, I have the preliminary drainage drawn in here on, on here for the second, uh, house proposed. Uh, I'm sorry, it's flipped. Uh, that, that's here, as, uh, in preliminary form, these have all been in here. And, uh, we believe we have, uh, everything asked for.
Uh, that, that, that plan there is new to me. I, I didn't see it in the packet.
It's in the package, it's in my list.
Um, yeah, are there any engineering calculations that go along with that?
Uh, it's preliminary, I did some because I, I know how to use the, uh, Coltech system very well. Uh, I measured the square footage of this house and any, uh, surface, uh, and placed a preliminary number of drywells around.
I mean, I would, I would suggest another staff meeting on this, I don't know, I'll leave it up to Rob, but, um.
Yeah, I was gonna.
What I'm seeing is not, is, is, is not enough information.
Yeah, I was gonna agree with Anthony's comment on that. I mean, looking at this plan in front of us, you know, with the, I assume those are Coltech three thirty chambers. Um, although we don't need to see a fully detailed plan that has inverts and perk tests on at this time. It would still need to see them, you know, scaled off the property lines, you know, Coltechs are typically no closer than ten feet to a property line. We wanna check clearances to some of the utilities, I know there was a water line shown, you know, obviously, there's a lot of, you know, things that have to be coordinated, um, the water.
Well, I, I understand that, uh, very well, but that's whole here, I've already.
There's another plan that shows a sewer line going through the two Coltechs you have there, so I'm not, you know, this needs to be, uh, coordinated a bit better, I think.
Can you see my cursor? There's no, there's a sewer line coming out here, it runs under this patio and then over to the, it's not going on that.
We, that needs to be shown on the plan. I mean, I have a plan here that shows a sewer line going out to Dillon. So I'm not sure what I have here.
That's pretty, I know that, and that's pretty early.
Right now, as part of this application review, there will be referrals made, so obviously for the water service issue, you know, ultimately the Westchester Joint Water Works is gonna confirm the preferred location for the water service to be taken from. Jim, when you spoke to the county, did they give you any sort of feedback on the proposed tie-ins, one of their trunk manholes?
Uh, they, they said yes, they're, I, I don't have the, the paper from them, I only have, uh, the, um, the permission from Mr. Pompo up there, uh, uh, for the, uh, permission to go over the sewer. And there, there is permission as they did let everybody upstairs and Mr. Darty connect the manhole over here, so I know it exists.
Okay.
We have to find one, as a third piece of paper, we have to find it.
Okay.
But, uh, but, uh, right here, uh, I, I myself have called out Water Works to mark the, the water line in. That's all, all been marked in blue out on the property, you can still see it as a matter of fact. Uh, so we know where it is and it runs along here. Uh, uh, along the, uh, parallel to Premium River Road, it's all there. Uh, I think there is a, there is a meeting that has to take place, so I can define.
Right, right, uh, the town will be receiving what's called a will serve letter, so we will get that from the Water Works as part of this application review.
Mm-hmm. They've been out there with, yeah.
Where we are at this point, it seems to me, number one, the application's incomplete anyway. And we just proceeded with it so that we could have this, uh, consideration discussion, because this, the various documents not being signed is incomplete. So what I would propose at this point is that you have your peer meeting and discuss what, all the things you're discussing now and anything else we think ought to be. Uh, that we put this on the agenda for further consideration at the September meeting and go from there.
I appreciate that, Mr. Angle. I just wanted to add one more thing, that, uh, you may not see stamped documents from, uh, my design work because it's not a submission yet. So you may not see, I'm not stamping something that doesn't, doesn't work yet. So that's why you see it for me, I can get, I can get, uh, there exists Bernardo's is stamped, uh, site plan. I can, I can get them for you if they aren't lost in the sauce with all the submissions. Let me get them, I'll, I'll correct the EAF. Uh, and I'll, I'd appreciate another meeting with all the engineers to just define where everything is and what the proposal is.
Yeah, at the same meeting, you'll find out about what, you know, what EAF form has to be filed. And we, there's a fairly long break between this meeting and the September one, uh, which, okay, so it's only September fourteen. So you should have plenty of time to get all this stuff done and still get it in fourteen days before.
Okay, I appreciate that, I just, um, the, the reason you may not see, it's, it's trying to prove a negative, this is the, the line, we're not building anything over here yet.
Well, we're aware of that.
Yeah.
I think they wanna know that it's possible. And, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's gotta, feasibility has to be shown on an, you know, preliminary engineering level. Um, but understand, if you submit a site plan with, 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 uh, stormwater provisions and layout, that needs to be signed and sealed.
Uh, well, it just said preliminary, uh, in the instructions, so we didn't do that.
To sign and seal a preliminary plan.
Okay, anyway, just so that, you know, this can make progress next month and in between. I think we can just go to that and everybody will hopefully come back with all this stuff fixed.
Okay, it's, uh, it's all here, I just have to point it out to everybody. Uh, thank you.
And I guess just before we move on, are there any other discretionary approvals other than, um, uh, Westchester Joint Water Works? I, I assume you also need Department of Health or?
Yes.
Okay, and any other agencies?
Uh, just the, um, I, I think the Bureau of Land Use might be involved with the county, but I'm not sure that, I've never seen the approval standing for that.
Okay, because this will be type one, there needs to be coordinated environmental review. So since we're early into this now, if, um, Rob and Francine, are you able to send a notice of intent to be lead agency to, um, Water Works, Department of Health, and, um, if, if there's a possibility that the county land bureau is an involved agency, we should send it to them too? And then if that, if that goes out, you know, in thirty days, they don't indicate any, um, objection, then that's one obstacle cleared.
Yes, the office will prepare the notice of intent, Lisa.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on that.
Sure, that'll move things along. So is anybody else on, on our call now, anybody on the board, someone, I mean, I think I asked all the questions, anybody else have any? No, no yellow ones. Okay, so just wanna make sure, Lisa, that the clock is not running at this point because we don't have a completed application. It will presumably run from the next consideration if all is well, is that correct?
Yeah, I don't think there's any clock until the public hearing is closed, so we're fine in terms of any kind of.
I just don't wanna get in a position where.
Right.
We have a problem.
And I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Fleming understands that, um, the seeker process will need to be concluded before you can get your certifications from, um, Water Works and Department of Health, so.
No, I'm aware.
Okay.
Uh, it's gonna take a while. Okay, but there's nothing we can do about it, we have the double procedure with the two laws, anyway. Okay, I think we're, we're done, we can move on to the next item. Is that okay, Jim, anything?
Yes, no, thank you, we'll, we'll just get to another meeting with the engineers in the office and, uh, hopefully clean it up.
We'll try to, yeah, we'll try to make progress next time.
Okay, thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, next item. Is item five sixty-five Myrtle Boulevard, uh, consideration of a residential site plan.
Hey, I'm gonna be bringing in the applicant team. Uh, if anybody would just use the raise your hand function, so make sure that everyone's brought in. Hey, uh, welcome, Josh and Elliot, uh, you can just confirm if there's anybody else still in the waiting room, please let us know.
Yeah, I don't believe that there is. I think I may. Um, are we, uh, ready?
Ready.
Uh, I just wanted to, uh, start by saying, you know, I, I don't know if Carol Murray is there, but I wanted to welcome Carol to, uh, Marinerick. Uh, I'm sure you guys all did that, but she is, uh, certainly, uh, well respected in, uh, from, from Greenberg. Where I dealt with her there. Um, all right, uh, so today we're discussing a, um, a new, uh, residential site plan, uh, for this house at, uh, sixty-five Myrtle. The existing house is here. Uh, the existing house, uh, doesn't meet any of the current side yard setbacks. It's too close on either side. Uh, it does have the front setback. Uh, the lot is a fifty foot by, um, hundred and sixteen feet deep, uh, lot. I think it's one sixteen. You know, one seventy-six, sorry, one seventy-six foot lot, uh, deep lot. Uh, can you see my, uh, screen?
Yes.
All right. Um, anyway, uh, we, it's a through lot, uh, goes from Myrtle, uh, on, uh, north to Laurel on the south. Uh, Laurel is a dead end road, um, that, uh, uh, there's only, there's about ten lots that are through lots that go from Myrtle to Laurel. A little bit farther to the east, uh, there are several lots that actually front on Laurel, uh, with houses at front on Myrtle. Um, in this area, the, certainly the ones on, uh, either side are through lots as well. Uh, because it's a through lot, uh, and we're showing a, uh, proposed, uh, swimming pool here. We had to go to the zoning board of appeals because we have two front yards and nowhere yard and we can't put a pool in the front yard. Uh, they did grant that variance, uh, to us, um, last week and week before, um, and, um, so we're good to go with that. Uh, we are proposing a, um, a new house that meets all of the current zoning requirements. It's, uh, eight feet on, uh, one side of your setback, ten feet on the other, although it's not marked, I'm telling you. Thirty feet in the front. Uh, it meets all of the, uh, coverage requirements, et cetera. Um, and, uh, Myrtle, just I wanted to also point out that Myrtle is about, um, ten feet higher than this backyard. Uh, the backyard, there's a low point. It's high up again, uh, and, and along Myrtle, then it slopes down to the back and then back up to Laurel. And there's a low point through the middle of the property and, and we're trying not to grade, uh, to allow the water to flow through. Uh, there actually a low point in the neighborhood, about two lots over, um, to the west. Uh, we're proposing, uh, the driveway is, uh, right now, the driveway is right along the property line uh, to a one car, um, detached garage in the back. And we're proposing, uh, straight in driveway, uh, under the, under the house. Uh, as far as, uh, I know your questions about compressors and things. Our pool equipment, uh, is under the open porch here, the covered porch here, and our compressors are also underneath the uh, covered porch area, um, in the back corner of the house. Uh, we did our preliminary, uh, calculations for our drainage and we're showing eight Coltechs lined up along the side here, um, which is about, uh, ten feet off of the property line. Um, we didn't want to go too much further because we end up in that drainage, uh, the overland flow that goes from uh, the lots to the, to the, uh, east and the lots in the west, and we didn't want to, um, interfere with, uh, any of that or cause it, uh, any sort of additional runoff. Currently that, currently there, um, the house just runs off onto the ground. There's no, uh, provision for underground detention. As we know, there is a, um, a drainage catch basin here in the back. Uh, it doesn't function at the moment. Um, I'm not really sure where it goes. It's clogged. The pipes are all clogged. Um, what else? We, uh, we did, uh, um, submit architectural plans. Um, see if I can get that up. Uh, that would be planning board submission. Um, so this is, uh, the architectural rendering, the front, uh, standard, uh, hip roof, front, uh, entrance on the right side. Uh, this is the rear yard, uh, elevation, and this is the area underneath, uh, where we're putting the, um, uh, pool equipment and the compressors, uh, underneath that, uh, overhang. Uh, the.
Is there a generator too?
Um, I don't believe there's a generator at this time. Let's go back. Let's, uh, just check. Uh, we have pool equipment. Um, well, let me, uh, I don't think there's a generator at this time. We do show three, uh, compressors though. Um, let's see, yeah, no, just three, uh, just three, uh, air conditioning compressors. Um, the, so we started looking at that. This is the side yard. Uh, this is the side towards the east, that, that open space for mechanical underneath here. Um, the floor plan, uh, this is the, uh, the neighborhood area map with the neighborhood, uh, properties. Um, we also had a landscape plan done that is gonna fully screen, augment the, uh, uh, the area to Laurel and then, uh, screen, uh, both foundation and, and pool screening on the other side with some, uh, minor thing in the front. We're not taking down any trees, um, for this application. That's a first for us at least.
When, when can I chime in?
Sorry, you don't get a chance on this one, other than, uh, I guess, uh, we gotta go to, um, CAC, coastal zone.
Coastal zone. But I do want to chime in on this one.
All right.
I, I do, I do want to request that you get the two trees on the, uh, right side of the property evaluated because they're on the property line. Uh, I think they're gonna be, um, really close to your roof line. And, um, yeah, just, I don't know how they're gonna fare during construction, but they also might be in really crappy condition. So I know your, your, your landscape architect is also an, an arborist.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, if you can get, get him to take a look at it. And then, um, I don't want you to put any planting in the right of way behind the property. It should all be on your, on your lot.
All right. I didn't see that until just now myself, but yeah, no problem.
Okay, I have, I have a number of questions for you, please, Elliot. The, in the back of the property, there's a concrete platform. It's near the rear wall. Appears on the survey, uh, and on your diagrams. Okay, what is under it and why is it still there? Why do you intend to leave it?
Um, we're not, in, in the proposed conditions, it's gone. Uh, this is the existing conditions map, and this is the proposed conditions. We don't label it to be removed, but we are removing it. There was a walkway. I think there was a shed there. It's about the size of a, you know, uh,
garden shed.
Shed, and so we think that that's what it was.
And what, what about the sort of pathway, concrete?
Yeah, the pathway also comes out. I don't know, you know, this. Um, yeah, I, I, I have no idea. It, it was a walkway or remains of a walkway. Uh, and the concrete pad for what we think was a shed, uh, we are proposing to remove all of that.
Okay, so that will be made clear in the plans?
Yes, so, but to be removed.
Okay, that also reduces the impervious area, which is good. Okay, the survey by you, I think.
Yep.
Okay, shows the concrete plant, uh, platform, but it does not show the walkway. Is there?
Yeah, it's remains of a walkway. It's, but I certainly don't know why it was removed from that.
Okay, so it could just be put back because it's still there?
Yeah, layer, you know, is these computer files when you play around with layers, they're on or off. And so, yeah, we missed that. No problem.
Okay, the retaining wall is at the back of the property. Seems to be coming apart in places, particularly on the right side. So I assume you're proposing to fix all that?
Um, whatever repairs are necessary, yes. I mean, we're not, we're, we're not necessarily gonna take it down and, and we don't at this moment, um, thinking about taking it down, but we can look at it and see what needs to be done.
Well, it, it basically holds up the land between the property and, and Laurel.
Yep.
So, uh, if you took it down, you'd have to put something else there.
Yep.
Okay, on the survey, it's something called, quote, irregular old wired wire fence across the rear of the property, which when I looked at it, fit that description perfectly. Uh, uh, is there a proposal to replace it with something better?
Um, well, as, uh, required by code on the, on the, for the fa, uh, for the pool, we're proposing a new fence all the way around the property that returns into the two house corners here and here.
Okay, well, that's, that's what I sort of thought, but it doesn't seem to appear that way on the diagrams I saw. So just please make that clear. Then the next item I have, you know, deals with the, uh, pool and the screening of the pool on the left side facing the front of the house as it is. Their landscaping all belongs to the neighbor, except for some shrubs that are supposed to be planted. And the, their evergreens that the neighbor has, but there are large spaces between them, seven of them. So I would like you to consider planting equivalent trees, obviously not quite as tall as the neighbor has to fill up the seven holes as opposed to a bunch of shrubs, which won't do anything to move the pool from the neighborhood, from the neighbor apartment.
All right, I'll refer that to the, uh, landscape architect, uh, but I will tell him that we need to, uh, the.
Yeah, I mean, we have to have real screening.
Yep.
Okay, the next item I had you already discussed was the planting of the ever, additional trees in the right of ways, but I think Liz already dealt with that. Okay, uh, with respect to the pool, as you're well aware, these houses are pretty much on top of each other with these fifty foot lots. So I'd like to have some proposal as to what's to be done to control lighting and noise, not noise of kids playing in the pool, talking about amplified noise, you know, that kind of stuff. Uh, so that this pool does not become a pariah for the neighborhood.
All right, yeah, we don't propose any, um, any, any outdoor lighting other than what's required by code, uh, at doors and things. Uh, there may be a light, sometimes there's a light inside the pool underwater light. Uh, and we don't propose any amplified, uh, amplified, uh, speaker system.
So you wouldn't mind if, if this gets approved, that those restrictions are included?
I will certainly. I, I don't believe that'd be a problem, but I certainly would, I'll confer with, uh, with the owner on. Um, I, I don't know if I, uh, it really matters, but, uh, Josh Ridford Tig, the, uh, the, the builder, he's built several houses here in Mamaroneck. Uh, this, this is gonna be his house. I know that he always can sell it, but, uh, uh, he's finally getting married and he's gonna be, uh, building his house for himself. So, uh, um, uh, it doesn't have any bearing on your decision certainly, but, uh, just to, I'd like to know.
No, congratulations to him and his fiancee. Okay, uh, where will the soil that comes out of the pool, et cetera, where's that gonna be kept?
Um, well, uh, most of it'll be removed from the site. Um, I think that, uh, some of that work is gonna have to be done almost prior to the house construction. Uh, with the minimum setbacks, it'd be very difficult to, uh, get rid of the material, uh, once that foundation is in. Um, but any excess material, of course, will be removed from the site.
Okay, and the, is there, I didn't notice where sanitary facilities are to be kept either.
Um, well, the, right now, the sewer and water and all the services are on Myrtle Avenue, so they'll continue to be in Myrtle.
No, I, I don't mean that. I'm talking about during construction. I assume.
Oh, I do, right here, um, in the, on the corner. Can you see that? No, I'm on the wrong drawing. Hold on. Uh.
Maybe I just missed them.
Oh, I think I, um, I stopped sharing. Wait a minute, I gotta go back to sharing. Uh, share.
There, there is a porta john showing.
Oh, there is? Okay, then.
On your.
Sorry, it's, uh, right down here in the front. Uh, again, we, there's not much place to put it. Uh, normally we would have put it someplace less intrusive, but because of the, with the narrow side yard setbacks, it'd be very difficult to put it anyplace else.
Well, it, it would seem to me that, uh, you know, the last place neighbors are gonna want it is in the front yard.
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand, and, and I would normally say, you know, we, we certainly always try to put it someplace unobtrusive, but, um, yeah, this is a tough site for it.
Okay, but you're gonna have the two side yards, so presumably it could be put behind the house. In other words, between the house and the pool, new house and the pool for the time being.
Uh, with all the going back and forth. I mean, maybe what I can suggest, and let me know if it's possible, we can certainly put a temporary stockade fence around three sides of it. Would that help, uh, six foot stockade fence, uh, temporarily?
I think that would violate zoning.
I know, it's temporarily and, uh, you know, and, and it's just really to hide, you know, the item. So I, I don't know if they, if you have the authority to do that.
I don't think we have the authority to do something that potentially violates zoning.
Just an out of the box idea might be maybe if you're getting somewhere variety. I'm not sure what's on your planning schedule, but if you have some landscaping brought in early, might be able to create a little temporary berm with a few landscape plantings around it to kind of, that's not true, so that's still sustainable.
Yeah, I mean, you can just.
All right, uh, possibly, uh, I'll, I'll talk to the, to, to the owner about it and see if there's something else, but if we're gonna buy plants, we could buy some plants and put them in a berm and then transplant them later on.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
Exactly. Yeah, because the berm's not gonna stay.
Yep.
Might use the, the transition here just to note that, you know, engineering, this will, will have some comments. I'm sure Anthony has some that you may not have in a, in a memo just yet. Uh, I know the one that I want just to state was that the grading on the plan, uh, doesn't show contours just yet. So I'm sure Elliot's next to middle will have a little more detail on it, but, you know, obviously we, we want to see contours and wherever there's great change proposed.
Um, all right, yeah, I mean, I do show, there's, there's very little, uh, grading that is gonna happen on here. Um, there is, these are, these heavy lines are, are proposed contours. I'll make them more evident, but we're pretty much, uh, not really changing, uh, trying not to change a lot of grade.
Yeah. More towards the back.
Uh, yeah, we, we actually do note that, and I'll, I'll send, I'll send you a memo, Elliot, but, um, like the driveway, I think, I think you need to show them more grading there and, uh.
Not a problem.
We, we had a handful of, uh, uh, comments mostly on detailed stuff, um, the, probably the three main things I had were, um, it wasn't clear if you did, uh, deep test pits, uh, sufficient depth of the Coltechs in the back. I, I saw there was a perk rate on the plans, but I didn't see a test pit. I'm concerned about maybe groundwater back there.
All right.
So maybe take, take a look at that. Um, you mentioned the drain inlets, uh, they just kind of disappear on the proposed plan. Uh, if they are going somewhere, maybe they should be investigated and cleaned out and uh, your Coltech system could have an overflow to it if it's a functional connection to something. But that should be noted what's happening with those. Um, and the only other, uh, thing of real significance would be, I, I just had a bit of a concern. I think we talked about this in, in our peer meeting. The, the Coltechs right against the pool there, very, very close proximity. Um, I would just uh, suggest that you look at that separation, you know, so that the Coltechs don't cause any kind of undermining of the pool or get as much separation there as possible. Uh, what I've seen in the past is, uh, where dry wells are close to a pool, um, the side wall, uh, against the pool, uh, sometimes it have, uh, a membrane or something to prevent, uh, water, you know, uh, you know, from going in that direction at least. Um, but they just seem very close. It's just something, just to kind of try to maximize that separation, I think. And the rest is just kind of detailed. I'll, I'll get, I'll get this to you.
Great. The, the, we're engineers. The amount of detail you have on water and so on and on the plans is sufficient because it appears to be a lot less than we typically have.
I didn't, I didn't see the water and sewer service line shown. There was reference to a sewer, uh, sewer service. Uh, so I, I, I note that, so I think maybe Elliot can just clarify that on the, on a revision.
And that would also apply to drainage, et cetera, because, I mean, the back, the Laurel area is higher. Because I mean, the back, the lower area is higher than the back of the property, it slopes down toward the back of the property. That water's gotta go someplace.
They ask how, what's the total height of the structure?
Of the proposed structure?
Yeah.
Funding board submission, all right, let's see. Twenty eight point seven feet from the garage to the midpoint of the roof.
Okay, it seems rather high compared to the houses on either side. And there, it it's very shallow setbacks from the property lines. It looks like it's really going to overshadow both of these houses.
Um, the the, this is the house currently, and we already are taller than the house on the left, certainly. Uh, the house on the right is only a single, single story house, um, but. I'll have the architect look at something on that, certainly.
It's possible, I think, to maybe change the roof line a bit, make it a bit lower, or at least lower, up here, lower. Even if it isn't lower. But there are other two story houses on that street.
No, I I realize that, it's just these two smaller houses are really going to. And you know, the sun comes up on the, you know, the left hand side and goes to the right hand side. So the the house to the right is going to be in the dark at sunrise, the house to the left is going to be in the. In the dark at uh, sunset, which is unfortunate.
Well, yeah, I mean, most of it, the south is to the back, and so it's not quite straight up and down ever, but.
No, I.
I will talk to the, I'll re- I'll refer that to the architect, certainly.
There there is an architectural uh, elevation, composite elevation with the three houses, there you go.
Right, well, I've seen it, that's what.
That's the point, I mean.
Yeah.
The second story itself is higher. Uh, basically than both houses.
Yeah.
All of these, you know, each each house is essentially a one, a one story, it's the one and what we call one and a half at sixty three. And that's a one at sixty seven, so. Um, yep, and I I'll refer it to the architect, though.
Changing the roof line. Could make this living house several feet lower. But I still love the same house.
Yeah, I don't pretend to be an architect, so uh, well, I play one on TV, but you know.
Okay, anybody else have comments?
The only thing I I didn't see anything about the air conditioner, was it on there? Uh, the details probably, um. Elliot, you should saw about the uh, first one that was on the agenda, details on the AC.
All right, so as as far as the location, we're putting it underneath the the covered porch in the back, so it's a raised porch. Uh, and we're putting the equipment underneath.
Yeah, uh, just when you submit your plans, details on the air conditioner, how much noise compared to something else. That'll be very helpful if you could do that.
Okay, I think in this case, we're in the same place as we were before, that there are enough things to be done, that there ought to be another peer meeting. We should go have a further and hopeful final consideration meeting in September. Uh, with everything taken care of, and then go directly to a public hearing with coastal zone in the middle. Uh.
Can we, can we go to coastal zone prior to that meeting?
Uh, but.
I'm not sure a peer meeting is really necessary, the 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 comments at least I had were relatively minor. Um, which I'll I'll forward, uh, you know, this week to uh, Mr. Señor to address for the next submission.
Um, yeah, so we can, if in that case, if we can schedule, I think, the September meeting is a public hearing, we certainly appreciate that.
Uh, what's your schedule for the coastal zone, Liz?
So, so our next meeting um, is gonna be in September uh, on the nineteenth.
Okay, so that would be after. So anyway, we need to have your coastal zone report. Uh, in order to have a public hearing.
Right.
Okay, so why don't we refer this to coastal zone? Suggest that you come back at our September fourteenth meeting, so we can go over all the things from now and potentially set the public hearing for October.
Um, Rob, has Rich prepared a zoning compliance memo for this?
Um, I have not seen one unless Francine, did you possibly receive one from us?
No.
Francine, uh, you're muted, but I think you're saying no.
Still not, still not hearing you, we did uh, just, we did as part of our package for the zoning board of appeals submitted a um. An eight and a half by eleven uh, zoning chart that showed we conform to everything except for the setbacks on the pool.
All right, so let's just make sure we get that in the the Rich's memo in the package for the next meeting.
Noted, yep.
Okay, anything further with respect to this, but for this evening? Elliot, we'll see you next month.
All right, thank you for your time, appreciate it. Bye.
Okay. We're calling next set of Robin, could you please do something to get a a microphone? Uh, for Francine that works. Or as Meredith, you're gonna do that. Uh, as our liaison, this clearly isn't working.
Yeah, I was gonna say that our our IT director's been away for the last two weeks, but um. I'll refer this to him once he's back next week, um, I know Francine does have an external mic, so this might just be a glitch that it's not working tonight, we'll have to see.
Okay, cuz we've had trouble before. Okay. Thank you. Okay, next item, again, double consideration is forty three Mohegan Road.
Hi, good evening. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, my name is Louis, architect with Louis and Lewis Architects.
At the moment, it became unclear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, now it's better, thank you.
Better, okay. I'm here this evening, um, representing Sarah and Jim Cody who live at forty three Mohegan. And also joining the Sarah and Benny Salanitro is our civil engineer. So I can give you a project overview, and then I'll turn it over to Benny to review the civil engineering components.
You're on.
All right, you see my screen?
Yes.
Uh, excellent, so um. Sarah and Jim live at the corner of um, basically Avon and Mohegan. I'll zoom in a little bit into the little little diagram. Um, their house in the neighborhood, and then show you some pictures of their. Front of their house, uh, fronting Mohegan, as well as the the drive that comes down, they have a um. Resess driveway and garage under the kitchen. And what we are proposing this evening is a detached garage and raised driveway. That helps to address some flooding issues that they've had in the past. As well as a patio area up of um, behind the detached garage. I'll go through some pictures here, so just some, to give you some images of what the existing property looks like, the front of the house. Um, the left side where the garage and the driveway is, um, and the right side, as well as a snapshot of the rear. And then some of the neighboring um, houses and and properties in the neighborhood. And then uh, giving you an overview. Of the neighborhood, uh, here's Avon, here's Mohegan, their property abuts the leather stocking trail. As well. And their existing site plan, here's Mohegan at the bottom of the page, Avon on the left, their existing drive. Um, it 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 comes up and then drops back down to, they have a recessed area where they park their cars. The garage is approximately in this area. And um, given their location with Avon and Mohegan and the way the grades work, and Benny can explain a little bit further, they get a lot of. Water runoff coming down Avon hits, comes along Mohegan and enters their property and channels on down. And then what we are proposing to do is, I'll zoom in a little bit more. So we are proposing uh, moving the driveway over to the left and adding a detached. Garage to the left with a a walkway that leads you down. To a patio area that we're gonna raise the recess driveway area. And provide a stone um, on gray patio. And we're gonna remove the overhead garage doors and put in windows and and lift this up so that we um. And and make it meet the grade at the back, but we'll have, uh, we'll convert the existing garage space to a a gym. And they'll have windows where the garage doors were looking out onto the patio. And then this would be a a terrace, a stone walk, um, dropping down to this patio area. And then. Um, then we would have a a stair uh, leading up to the front door, the the existing walk. And stone stoop at the front door, and then we would um. soften the front walk here and lead it out to Mohegan, currently, you come in off the drive and it it kind of leads you up. To the um, stoop now, there's not a connection off of the street with the the walkway. And then. Then just for reference, this is the uh, existing lower level plan, where this is the garage, this is the driveway. Mudroom, um, their existing gym and mechanical space, family room, laundry and a cross space on the um, existing lower level. The um, upper level, the first floor, your front door here, you know, dining room, study, kitchen, uh, that area. And here you. And here you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. And all of a sudden I heard static and it was gone. I'll, I'll start to share again.
You wanna do, you wanna pick up from where you left off, Paige?
Sure, I I was going through the um, the existing floor plans. It's not working.
Oh, you got it.
You got it, okay, all right, good. Oh, I was panicking, um, existing first floor plan, and then um. Apologize. There we go, can you hear me now?
Yes.
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 I proposed uh, floor plan, um, here's a proposed floor plan for the garage as well as the gym space that leads up to the patio. And then the upper level garage would be um, calling it flex space, would be like storage uh, up in the um, rafters. And then at the, at the rear of the house, we were uh, proposing to expand the, we have a a deck that's over a portion of the. Garage below, and we're gonna expand the deck um, to the rear to allow for some uh, outdoor dining uh, off the kitchen. And then I'll show you some elevations to give you an idea what it looks like from the exterior, so the existing front elevation of the house. And then proposed with the garage um, to the left. And then just looking at the left side, um, this would be fifteen lap of the house. And the proposed left with, I removed the garage, detached garage, so you can see this, so we're we're filling in the. Former garage with uh, windows. And then uh, you see it with the garage as a reference. And then elevation to the garage. Um, the rear and the side.
Isn't there still a uh, a drop off from the street to the garage? I mean, is this actually gonna cure the flooding problem?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hand it over to Benny now, and Benny can address um, how we're uh, addressing that that particular issue. Benny, you want me to um.
Yeah.
Share, or you wanna use?
Yeah, you could take a break.
Good evening, everyone, and uh, welcome to Carol as well. The application, again, just to reiterate, is a, an application primarily out of necessity. The property is not in the flood zone. So the flooding that occurred, like many other homes on the September one event. Um, came from uh, various other places, in in the case of forty three Mohegan. The driveway was the primary conduit for that water to uh, invade the lower floor. The uh, proposed driveway is going to be sloped uh, away from. The uh, the home or away from the garage towards Mohegan Road slightly. Um, the uh. Total lot area is just under twenty four thousand square feet. Uh, I did provide on my plan, uh, comparative analysis of the impervious area, so there is a. Uh, increase of about eleven hundred and fifty nine square feet, or twenty five point two three square feet of the total lot area. We're before the planning board for uh, two applications, site plan, uh, the reason for site plan is that we hit the trigger. On the percentage of renovation, uh, based upon the town code, and we also have a uh, wetland consideration for a planning board as well. We are joined the leather stocking trail as well as a uh. Uh, water course that is part of the shell Drake system. So the, again, the project is uh, described is for the abandonment of the driveway. Enclosing the garage door, the construction of a new standalone garage. With uh, uh, outdoor use of the patio uh, towards the rear of that. Uh, the drainage consideration is uh, being considered as wholly uh. Functioning to contain twice as much as what is being added to the site. And the rationale for that is a question of practicality, we have uh, a garage, we have a driveway, we have a patio. So all of those areas, while they are less than the net increase, they they do uh. Uh, we do wanna capture that water, so we're, we're, we're designing the the system for twenty eight hundred plus square feet. Rather than the uh, the minimum, so that uh. And the field work that we did, we did do deep test pits and percolation tests, we uh. We have a very conservative approach, and we're adding a a total of thirteen dry wells to the site. Uh, where only seven would be required if you were just doing net increase in impervious area, so. I think the project uh, understands that the uh, Cody's experience. Uh, an inundation of water, and uh, this uh, provides for uh, protection of the home. Um, many homeowners are doing projects that uh. Require some uh, modification to openings, be it doors or windows. Where water has uh, unfortunately found its way in, so this is that type of a project, this is a betterment. For uh, the protection of their home and property, the way the property is currently positioned. Where the gradient is towards the water course, I I've identified that this. I've identified that this dark line here, it's approximate, it's taken from accounting GIS, but there is a water course that runs through roughly parallel to the rear property line, as does the leather stocking trail. Of interesting note, during Ida, we did not, the property did not experience any water from the rear or the area adjoining the leather stocking trail, which surprised me, but I guess that's the way the hydraulics worked during that event. But the rest of the property, especially down here in the driveway, did experience quite a bit of water, I think there was a neighborhood of two, two feet plus or minus in the home. So the project, we did have a peer review meeting a few months back, these plans were submitted, were prepared in early April and submitted for this, this application consideration at this point. We did do field, we had to do the field testing. And we believe the plan is complete, there are some miscellaneous items that I did pick up from your previous agenda items from tonight that I do need to provide for, but you can go through those lists as well for me if you, if you think it's necessary, but any, I can answer any questions.
Let me, one thing, because that could affect, among other things, the design of the new deck in the back. According to the building inspector, what you show as the rear setback is not the rear setback. According to him, the rear setback, the rear yard is the one opposite Avon Road. And all of this was determined years ago in connection with the building of the original house. And he says he has records to that effect. What that does, as I said, can change the design of your new deck, because you could go further, potentially, if you want to. But it also means that the plans that we have to work with have to have the rear yard where, according to Rich, the rear yard is. So, I mean, that's just drawing the line. So, okay, and you have plenty of empty space there, so I don't think it's going to interfere with anything. Okay? Yeah, he just wanted me to make that clear, so we don't have a problem later. Okay, on the application itself, there's an acknowledgement on the third page, which has to be executed by both owners and notarized, as it says. There's a copy of the deed that is not submitted, so far as I can tell from what we, what I received, I don't know if anybody else got one, but I didn't. There's also required copy of a survey, which I didn't get either. But again, I don't know if it was just the way my packet is, or it wasn't submitted, what happened?
Can I address that?
Sure.
I believe we did submit all that, and we can provide that again, we have all that information, we have the survey, the acknowledgement, the deed. I can't speak to as to why you did not receive that, but we did provide that.
Okay, well, the acknowledgement, I mean, I can't show it to you this way. Raise three, and it's blank. So that was, that certainly was not done, that's to the other items, I really don't know. It's always possible it happens, especially because Francine wasn't here when these packages were put together. That something was left out of them that you did submit.
Okay.
Okay. So I just want to raise it so that everybody, you know, after this, everything is complete. Okay, the those are all the questions and comments that I have at this point, I don't know if anybody else has any. Anthony, have you had a chance to get into this yet?
Yeah, we did take a look at it, and I do have a handful of comments, which I'll send out to the board and to the applicant. Mainly minor detail things, nothing major, really. I thought the, as Mrs. Salanitro stated, the design was conservative on the stormwater.
Can I ask, are you raising the land on which the new garage is going to be placed, or is it staying at grade?
Staying where it is. Plus or minus a few inches, just to clean up the edges, but there's no changing grade, no. And that will also be further explained on a plan.
What about the area which is now the, the lower end of the driveway sloping down from the street?
Yeah, so basically, we're filling in the bathtub, the bathtub being the driveway. The asphalt gets removed and gets discarded offsite. Then we will take the material that we excavate from the garage, place it in, in that void. And if that's not, it may not be enough, we may have to import some clean material for the final grading and the patio construction, so we are filling in the void.
Is the garage just going to be a garage, or is it going to have an attic with it, or ancillary things inside?
Probably plan for an attic for excess storage of, in the, above it.
Okay, so that's all because it has a whole bunch of windows.
We have a sloped roof, and we have some windows in the, in the peak of the gable. Or gables.
Okay, yeah, so on three sides, I think, we have three of the gables.
Correct.
Okay, but there's no plan to use it for anything other than storage?
It can't be.
I understand. But, you know, there are people who will do that for a playroom for kids or something of that kind.
That's why we have neighbors.
Best point.
We also have prepared landscape plans, you want me to run through those quickly?
Please.
Sure. So we have, can you see the existing plants? Site plan?
Yes.
Okay, so we're working with Breath of Spring to provide the landscaping information, so we've documented the area of, within the wetlands buffer, and identified the existing plant materials. Then our proposed site plan, a landscaping plan, I'm gonna zoom in, because I can't see that myself. And I'm sure you can't. So then around the patio, we've, you know, enhancing, working with the existing trees and adding some shrubs and plant materials. So we're working with, you know, native species and on property, nothing beyond the property line. We're working with the trees, there is one tree that the homeowners have already been working with Liz on to take down. We've already, they've already been granted approval to remove this 14 inch apple tree, that's probably right here where my cursor is. But otherwise, we're working with all existing trees, and we're just enhancing the proposed areas of work with native shrubs and plants.
They might need to redo that permit, because it's, it's probably like six years old by now.
For this, for the apple tree?
Yeah, I can't remember how old it is, but it's really an old permit.
We do permit, noted, thank you.
Yeah, you know, you can find it and, you know, submit it to us if you can find the permit, you know.
And then we're just enhancing landscape screening around the proposed deck rear. Any, any questions?
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, assuming that we can get the revised plans, because of the rear yard stuff.
Yeah.
You know, the other stuff, is there any reason why at this point this can't go to coastal zone?
Would like to go.
Looking for that referral this evening.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it, I think they're, they're far enough along with their plans.
Yeah, I mean, I think so too, but anybody else have a view?
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, Lisa, do we need to have a formal motion for that?
We do not, but I just also want to put in a request to get a zoning compliance memo for this one too, please.
Right.
Alright.
Well, yeah, it was Rich, who's the one who told me, sent me an email actually, for tonight, because he's not around, about this thing, you know, the front rear yard. So, you know, obviously, it will affect most of the plans, but it's the line. You know, as opposed to just changing the design of anything, unless there's something with the new deck that one might want to do differently, because it's no longer the rear setback. Okay. So, let's take this on to coastal zone. For the next, are we fine up along, as far as people are concerned, to set a public hearing in September for this?
We would just need to keep it, if you set one, that we just need to keep it open till October, because we won't have our CZMC review completed yet.
The CZNC is the 19th of September, is that correct?
Yeah, we need
Yes.
Okay. And then you, are you, the next, the September planning board is prior to that, correct?
The 14th. Yeah, I mean, if you want, so that you don't have to go through two appearances. In effect, of course, there are, we could postpone the whole thing till October when the report is done. And you don't have to come here for September, potentially for no reason.
We'd rather not.
Pardon?
We'd, we'd rather proceed, because we're trying to get the construction in 2022 as much as possible.
As I just heard from council, we're not going to be able to prove this even if all goes well until the October meeting.
It's still 2022.
That's true. That's up to the building department to determine.
That might not be 2022. Don't laugh, Rob, you know I'm
We do everything we can to keep it moving now, right Benny?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's where we are for this evening. And I don't see any reason why we have to do anything separate with respect to the wetlands and water course part. I think it's all been covered unless somebody disagrees. I mean, we'll have to have two public hearings, but I don't think we have to do anything further tonight. Again, the plans will have to match the rear yard stuff and so on. But effectively, you've given us two sets of the same plans, because you have to, I understand that.
Right.
Okay.
That will provide you with the revised plans showing the correct setback lines.
Yeah, just remember, it has to be in at least 14 days before our meeting, and Labor Day's in there someplace.
Okay. We can do that, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody have anything further before we call it a deal for tonight?
Enjoy the rest of the summer, everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, bye bye.
Bye bye, y'all, thank you.
Take care.
Night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Night, Liz.